Good evening, everyone. It's 5:30 PM and I will call the meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight is one of my favorite times for school board meetings. We get to recognize our new board members and watch them as they take the oath of office tonight. Dr. Pierce, will you please administer the oath of office?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mabry. Before administering the oaths of office tonight, I do want to just highlight that this is our first in-person board meeting in some time and according to the Open Public Meetings Act, in-person board meetings may be held without restriction on capacity and without physical distancing requirements. However, a remote option must continue to be made available. Under Governor Janesley's Proclamation 2005 and in accordance with the Washington State Secretary of Health's order, in-person attendees are required to wear face coverings. The Board must ensure that requirements are followed as Proclamation 2025 dot 15 prohibits any governmental, commercial, or nonprofit entity or private party from allowing any individual to enter or remain in an indoor space under their control unless the individual is in compliance with the Secretary of Health's face covering order and any subsequent amendments. The remote meeting option does continue to be available to those who do not wish to wear a face covering or are not able to wear a face covering or don't feel comfortable attending meetings in person. Those attending remotely may sign up to provide public comment using an online forum, which is made available beginning at 5:15 on the day of the meeting. So, we do appreciate the cooperation and understanding. As an entity, the Board can be held personally liable and there's legal implications for that if we aren't adhering to the requirement and ensuring that that requirement is being followed. Our attorney Bronson Brown is here this evening and if anyone has questions about that or is not currently wearing a face covering, Bronson would be able to connect with you. Bronson, can you just raise your hand, Bronson and team here to explain and answer any further questions that you might have about that. So, thank you so much. With that, I want to highlight one other thing connected to masks. Masks are required indoors as I just explained. However, there are some labor and industries, labor and industry or LNI rules regarding temporary removal of masks that allow for temporary removal for presenters while speaking on camera. And we do have our meetings now being broadcast and recorded. So, our new board members, when they take the oath of office tonight, you'll be able to temporarily remove your face covering as you take the oath and I'll have you at that podium using that microphone and I'll be at this podium using that microphone and I'll also be able to temporarily remove my mask while I administer the oath of office. And all of the staff members here and guests presenting tonight who will be presenting from this podium again while they're presenting on camera, they'll be able to remove their mask temporarily during that presentation. And so, there is that flexibility we have tonight. So, with that, very excited, I'd like to first, we're going to go in alphabetical order. So, I would like to first ask Mr. Galbraith to join me at the front dais and you can use that microphone and I'll use this microphone. Okay, Mr. Galbraith, if you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Gabe Galbraith.
I, Gabe Galbraith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Washington.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Washington.
And will faithfully perform the duties of Director of Kennewick School District Number 17.
And will faithfully perform the duties of Director of Kennewick School District Number 17.
In the county of Benton, state of Washington.
In the county of Benton, state of Washington.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Mr. Galbraith. Welcome to the Board of Directors. Okay, Mr. Valentine, it is now your turn. Mr. Cohen's going to fix the feedback here. Okay, so, Mr. Valentine, if you could please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Micah Valentine.
I, Micah Valentine.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And will faithfully perform the duties of Director of Kennewick School District Number 17.
And will faithfully perform the duties of Director of Kennewick School District Number 17.
In the county of Benton, state of Washington.
In the county of Benton, state of Washington.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Mr. Valentine.
As current legislative representative, I am serving as President pro tem as we do not currently have a board president or vice president. Per Board Policy 1120, at the first regular meeting following certification of the election of school directors, the director shall elect from among the members as president, I'm sorry, a president, a vice president, and a legislative representative to serve one-year terms. As President pro tem, I will facilitate this proceeding, the following proceedings. First, I call for nominations for the Board President. Do you have a nomination for Board President?
I would like to nominate Michael Connors.
Board President.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Very well, Mr. Mike Connors has been nominated to serve as the Board President. I would now call for the roll call vote.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvik?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Sure.
Mr. Mabry?
Thank you, guys. It's, I guess I'm the first new president in 16 years, 18 years. That's a long time, so, I will, thank you. You got to change seats? I got to move over one? I'm going to be Ron Mabry now? All good. It's a high seat. Wonderful. I'll do my best. Oh, God, you guys are hilarious.
She's on top of it. Those details.
Exactly.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Anyway, guys, I'll do my best. Thank you for your vote of confidence. So, I guess the next thing to do is now we need to get nominations for a Vice President. Do you have any nominations?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Mr. Mabry for Vice President.
Sounds great.
I second that.
First and a second. Anyone else? Let's call for the roll call vote, please, Patty.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvik?
Yes.
Mr. Mabry?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Okay, so now we need a new legislative representative. Do I have any nominations?
I move to nominate Micah Valentine as a legislative rep.
Okay, do we have any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Diane Summick.
Okay, so we have two. That's, we're off to the races here. So, what is the proper program? We have two. Do a roll call vote? Okay, so Patty, we're going to do a roll call vote for each. So, let's start with Mr. Valentine.
Okay, for Mr. Valentine, Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Uh, sure, yes.
Ms. Sunvik? No. Mr. Mabry?
No.
Mr. Connors?
No. So, let's have a vote, a roll call vote for Ms. Sunvik, please.
Okay, Mr. Galbraith?
No.
Mr. Valentine?
No.
Ms. Sunvik?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Mr. Mabry?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got a new leadership team. Wonderful. Thank you very much. All right, next on our agenda is communication from parents, staff, and district residents. So, I'm sure we have people who signed up?
So, we have in-person and remote.
Okay.
But I'm going to bring up the little presentation here with the nerves.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so we have quite a few people signed up here today. Okay, so I show 12 people signed up to speak in person. And, you have one online? Perfect, we have one person online. Okay, so you ready to go? Public comment? Okay, so we'll do the public comment at the front podium. So, we have one person online. Do we want to do the online person first or do we want to do that person first?
We'll do the in-person.
In-person first? Okay, so the first person I have is Jeff Dress. Please come to the podium and address the Board, please. Okay, so sure you have, we've got two minutes to speak.
That's all it'll take. It won't take that long.
All right, perfect.
I just, I'm here like others, I'm sure. It's, I think it's time to get rid of the masks. We've elected you folks as our people to represent the kids, number one, and I think they do more harm than good. I don't need to go through all the science. Everybody's got all that stuff. Having a kid that participates in boards, I can thank God that...
Yeah, just a second. They're going to turn the mic on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that better? Hello?
There.
Better? Hello? Hello? Is that better?
Yeah.
He says she can't hear you in the back.
Is that better?
There we go.
Okay. Anyway, I did...
Anyway, I just think, you know, you folks have been elected to represent our kids, number one. And, you know, we're, whatever, twenty months into a two-week flattening the curve issue. We're tired. I know the kids are tired, the majority of them are. The people that think they're so worried about it, they're probably all vaccinated by now. Not supposed to catch it from a kid, you know, and whatnot. The science, we don't need to beat that drum. I think it's time. And like I said, thank God that the athletic kids aren't having to wear them this year, which was an absolute joke last year. That was hideous. When you seen people passing out from wearing them during their sporting events, that was ridiculous. Anyway, it's time. We need to get rid of the masks. And we're hoping that you folks can stand up and do something about it. We don't have to sit there and listen to the dictator that we have in the state. But we'd appreciate you getting behind it and helping us out here. And I know there's a lot more of me out there, and a lot of the kids.
Thank you.
Can they use the other microphone, Dr. Pierce?
We got one or the other. Man, we'll, we'll address that another time here. I appreciate that. So our next speaker is Stephanie Galbraith. Galbraith, I should, I gotta pronounce that wrong.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Galbraith. I am the wife to the relative Gabe Galbraith. And I have been an employee of the Kennewick School District now for eight years combined. Teaching for four and eighth coaching for Comica High School. All three of our children have either attended Kennewick School District or have now graduated from there. In 2020, when some of you voted to close schools to slow the curve, I understood the need. That schools shut down and the world changed for our kids. Mask up for safety, stay home and save lives, get vaccinated, protect others, and many other slogans were thrown around to make the public feel responsible. We are now at the point where students are not faring well in our schools. Not mentally. They are not doing okay. There's bullying going on from other students, and it is encouraged by teachers and staff in our school districts. And I'm not okay with it. Terms such as naked nose are going around from teachers to call out students who are either not wearing masks or are wearing it underneath their nose. Students are encouraged to report their peers for not having a mask on or not having it on properly. Rumors of a wall of shame at Comica are going around, where if they are not wearing it properly, they are writing their name on a wall there. Teachers are docking grade points over masks at Southridge. When kids who don't have a mask on go into the office, and I go personally, this is my daughter, they get reprimanded for not having the mask. She went in there to get it, and she was reprimanded for not being prepared to go in there. Teachers are not the mask police. I am not teaching to sit there and mask-police my children in my classroom. My own daughter, who used to live at school, is begging me to take her out and place her in an online school. This is not okay with me. We are constantly told to have empathy for those around us. Where is the empathy from the teachers dealing with our students? There is none. I would suggest using the funds that go towards our CRT training and invest it into training teachers. It has to be a little more kind. Yes, CRT concepts are being presented in our schools, and they are being taught. As for the school board, you have been elected by the public and represent the students and community. You are not voted into alignment with the union priorities. You are not voted into alignment with teachers and staff. You are voted in to have the best interest of our students. Let's please represent well.
Thank you. Next on the list is JoJo Davis. Davis, two minutes. Two minutes, there you go.
Sixty-two years ago, Highlands was built. Today, the bones are the same. No other building in the Kennewick School District, their bones are that old. The bones were creaky in 1959 when it was built because seven years later, something happened and had to be remodeled in 1966. We didn't get another remodel until 1994, and can I just say it was lipstick on our pit. We got new windows and Apex system that still is not working. We got two new classrooms under remodel, same bones. Our current principals, where it's hard, brought us beautification things, but again, it's lipstick. It's not new building. Thanks to Ron Mayberry, Highlands got a track and field. We can't use it. The fields are not done. The track is not done. We were turned down for bleachers, I heard. Three thousand bleachers so that Chinook parents, Desert Hills parents, Forsen parents, when they come to our school, they have somewhere to watch their, their kids compete. We have no flashing crosswalk sign. I'm hoping we're not parking, we don't have children injured before we get a safety sign. Please come to a night event at Highlands. Dimly parked parking lot, twenty lucky spots for those that get it. You're gonna walk across cracked sidewalks. This is not good. This, our students deserve better. You built Twerse, a beautiful dual-language school, but you know how many parents are now looking at Highlands and saying, beautiful Twerse, beautiful Kennewick, Southridge, and Comica? Why would they send their kids to what looks like a substandard building? We have excellent staff members. Staff members will tell you everything. They're proud to be there. They love their community. They love their students. They don't want to complain. I'll complain for them. I'm a voter, I'm a taxpayer, and I work in the building. No one here lives in Highlands Boundary. None of the executive board lives in Highlands Boundary. Please do the best for Highlands students as you do everywhere else in our community. I know where your kids go to school, and I know the buildings are there. Please do it. I know it's tied to state funding. I know that. I know it's tied to, we need to have something on the west side tied to Highlands, so voters will vote for our children of color, children of poverty, and our community in Highlands. Sorry for going overboard, but or overtime. Thank you, and I hope you do address this very soon.
Dr. Pierce, can I ask for you to follow up on some of those things, at least to get information for the board? Can I ask along to ask that?
Yeah. Please take into those topics.
Ask me to follow up on that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, perfect. JoJo, thank you. Next is Annette Rose.
Good evening. Thank you for having in-person meetings. As a parent, I felt very unheard this past year and a half. I sent many emails, never receiving a response from anyone. When did parents and school board members become enemies? Parents and school boards should have a common goal of doing what is in the best interest of our children and ensuring they are receiving the best education possible. The fact that we have been at odds, that parents don't feel heard, and that you've been hiding behind Zoom, tells me that the direction we've gone is not in the best interest of the children, and we all know it. I guess that you've been told there is nothing you can do. Your hands are tied to the decisions that are being made for you. But the truth is, our government is set in a way that no one man has power over the people. That is a lie, a lie that we've been told and many people, including yourselves, have accepted. We've elected local officials to ensure that we are being heard and that the way our cities and schools are run is congruent with what we want. All elected officials work for the people. You work for us. It won't be easy, but it can be done. If all the tri-city school board members, superintendents, city councils, and commissioners-
Oh, pardon my speaking.
-will work together, we could change what has happened to our community. We, as parents, need you to be our voices. Every person on the school board has been a part of creating the disaster that we are in right now. Not doing anything is impacting something. Parents were very clear with the direction they want our community to go in recent elections. Almost every person who wanted an office was elected. The majority has spoken. Most of us didn't realize how liberal our school boards and local leadership had become. We stepped back and expected people we elected to do a job that's congruent with our beliefs. Now we know, and we will fight for our children. I have signatures of thousands of local parents who want the mask mandates. We vote. There are cities and states all over this country that do not have mask mandates in their school. If I looked at my daughter, would not have to test or wear masks in sports in school. After playing AP basketball for five years, she opted out of playing crying in basketball because she does not want the testing mandates. These children's lives are changing, and not for the rest. It is time to get on the same page with the parents, to work together, to stand up and do the jobs that we elected you to do. And it's time to stop eating pawns in a war against our children. We've made it clear that we are willing to fight, and we will put people in office who will support what we want. I am pleased with you to serve these decisions that are in the best interest of our children. We need you to help us. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Annette. Next is Deb Pukoo.
Good evening. I'd like to respectfully request the board or school district shares the following information and resources with parents. Number one, what is the main justification for vaccine push for the kids? And what is the justification of enforcing this specifically on school athletes? Number two, what evidence do you all have that proves that masks are, one, safe, and two, effective against the COVID virus? Three, what evidence do you have that proves that vaccines are, one, safe, and two, effective against the COVID virus? And four, why is our district different from other districts who are not enforcing their kids to do these things? I presume you have this information already, and I would appreciate you sharing this in whatever format is reasonable for the board and the school district, because my sources and the people I know have a lot of information to the contrary, and feel that we are literally endangering the lives of the students that we're all here to educate to here. And I think we might contact information if, is it possible to get a response from the district?
We can do that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Deb. Next is Dustin Peterson.
So I have a five-year-old daughter in the Kennewick School District, and she masks every day, just like most older-year-olds. For the last eighteen months, she's had cousins in other states. She talks to Texas and Utah, where I'm not masked. I'll point out that cousins in other states, like Utah, for example, have a lower COVID than Connecticut in Washington State. So masks, like, that is obviously not working. Over thirty-five states have entered their statewide mask mandates. I think it's time for Washington State to patch up the rest of the country. RCW 28A says the state school board has broad discretionary authority granted to it when not in conflict with state law. Notice, it is not mentioned in proclamations. At one time, the proclamation is a law, the word "law" here. Now, some may start with that. The difference between a proclamation and a law is key to our constitutional system. There's an executive branch, a judicial branch, a legislative branch. A proclamation is written by one man. The law is written and when people collaborate together through legislative process, through the legislature, the Senate, and the governor. I know that some will argue that school boards don't have the authority, but I want to encourage the school board to exercise your broad discretionary authority. At a minimum, I'd like to see the board advocate for emergency power reform. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Cedro Rodriguez. Did I pronounce that correctly?
We're all relatively disabled right now. I don't like doing this either. How good it is to be face-to-face with everybody. Thank you for coming, everybody. This is the first, first board meeting that I have attended, and I do believe there are many people, including myself, that will be attending from here on out. I've heard very good speakers, a lot of good input. My concern that I'd like to address the school board is with extracurricular activities at the school level. While going to school on a regular basis, sitting in a classroom three feet from another student is just fine, and I agree with that. But if you want to engage in an extracurricular activity such as playing sport or cheerleading for the team, you either have to be jabbed with an experimental and one of the most dangerous clinical vaccines that we have ever seen or tested twice a week. Now, while the vaccine, some say, is safe, the vaccine adverse event reporting system or VAERS will say otherwise. Over 1,700,000 adverse events with over 28,000 deaths at this point in time. I don't want to win that lottery. Testing requires a foreign object to be inserted into the student's body. Now, if this thing is so contagious and the students need to wear a mask to prevent the spread, there should be a spit test available. The particular test that the school is using contains E O or ethylene oxide, a product that is known as a known carcinogen listed on the cancer.gov website. Even in the most small amounts, the ability of ethylene oxide to damage DNA makes it an effective sterilizing agent, but also accounts for its cancer-causing activity. That's here, you can find that on the website. You guys look it up. There's no exemption. There's no opt-out. You either take your chances that you don't have an adverse reaction to the jab or accumulate ethylene oxide into your system to the point that you get cancer. I've already been there with my family. I don't want to wish that on anybody, and I don't want you to try to go back there again. It doesn't seem like much of a choice for me, for our kids. I bring this to the board's attention because when I voiced my concern to the athletic director, the principal, and the assistant superintendent, nobody had a clue that this was part of the program. I think that it's time that we find out exactly what's going on here, and we take action on it. Appreciate your time.
Please also follow up on, on the test that we're using.
You have to depress that.
Thank you. Next is Linda Trumporo, Trumpor?
I like to see the people that I talk to. So I'm gonna stand up here. First of all, these masks are communistic medical. They do absolutely nothing. It's like stopping mosquitoes with a chimping fence. The little particles in your mouth are so light and, that they're doing nothing. Did you forget about fresh air and sunshine? You have these children running in these activities with these masks on. It's ridiculous.
Ma'am, hey, you are here to address the board. If you would like to address the board, you're talking to the group. If you'd like to address the board, we would be more than happy to listen to what you have to say.
Okay. Brown University Rhode Island, UK Office of National Statistics, Germany First Registry, and the United States, all know that one, Blackpool, what is it, honey? I can't even think of the names right now.
I'm being awkward.
Right, that, right, what? But anyway, that is in the vaccine. That is a poison. That is giving people sick. Why did-
Ma'am, please address the board.
Why did the numbers go up for COVID? You know why? Because of the vaccines. It's in the vaccine. That was ninety-nine percent in the vaccine. I haven't worn a mask for two years. I don't have COVID. I don't get sick. I'm almost seventy-four, and I'm not on immunization. Why is that? Because I exercise. Because I hydrate. Because I eat foods that nourish me. This is what you need to do for your children. Start feeding them good food. You think it's funny? Well, maybe you like communism. Because it's coming.
We can't hear you. Can't hear you.
You got it now. It is coming. Okay, just, just know that.
And she's passionate.
Ma'am, it's done. Your face.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, next is Megan Benedict.
I am a mother of a child at Southridge, Chinook, and Fay Press Elementary. How to assess what students are learning isn't always one of the central, is always one of the central issues facing educators. It's no secret that grades are down overall nationwide due to the pandemic, but I feel like several school practices are- like several school practices are erroneously inflating grades and this is not the direction we should be going. The practices I'm referring to are the all-too-common practice use of open book tests, group tests, and test retakes. Students are offered in order to get their grades up. Is this real learning? I believe these practices lessen students' motivation to prepare and encourages poor study habits that leave students ill-prepared for college and careers. Some may argue in favor of less stress and anxiety with the opportunity of a do-over, but do we, as adults, get a second chance of an important work presentation because we are going through emotional drama? Or do our bosses allow us to do over because we're ill-prepared for a deadline? I feel as a society we are getting too soft. Realistically, I wonder if students are being taught to be concerned with the score rather than the satisfaction they try their best. I want students to do well on a test with a stake of conceptual knowledge acquisition, and I don't think in the current environment we are fostering this, and I ask that these practices be reexamined. To echo also the other people about the mask mandate, my child is eating lunch without a table. He has to eat it in his lap. I think that's ridiculous. I also think that, just as another side note, is that I think that phones should not be used at, in the middle school level, just because they should be learning and not be pulled to use their Chromebooks and use games as a side note. So those are my three thoughts.
Okay. Next speaker is Nikki Sessler.
Hi, I'm Nikki Sessler. My husband is Jared Sessler and he is running for Congress from Washington's fourth district. We are the parents of three amazing and beautiful kids, and I have boys, so please don't tell them I said that. So Jared and I believe that parents are the final authority over all aspects of our kids' lives. The government is not the third corner in our parenting decisions. God is. Our role as parents is to protect our kids' bodies, soul, and spirit, at the same time building them up to be productive citizens of this great country. We have lived in fear and compliance for much too long. It's time for parents to take a stand, band together, and say enough is enough. These are our kids and we will make the decisions about what is best for them. We will not co-parent with the government or school authorities. When Jared is elected, we want him to help restore America to the values that our country was founded on, and we want the next generation to learn those values too. All over this country, parents are standing up, enjoying the movement. The mama and papa bears are coming out of hibernation. Please support Madison's campaign and our efforts. I can promise you that we will fight tooth and nail to support our families and the safety of our children here in central Washington.
Thank you. Next, excuse me. Next speaker is Amanda Brown.
Good evening, Superintendent Pierce. President Connors, I'm President Mayberry, member of the board. I am a teacher, of course, at elementary. I have the pleasure to speak tonight about the first unit that I taught in social studies to my board last year. It centered on deliberative processes, democratic principles, and deliberate and democratic processes, deliberate and deliberate processes. I apologize. In this unit, we students learned that it is through these processes that we elect our officials, and by this process we have Mr. Valentine and Mr. Galbraith. Welcome to the board. And we elect our officials that way. And we also learned that we have rules that govern our society and we have rules that govern our community and even the spaces where we live and work, like at school. For instance, we go over in hallways so that it's safe. These rules are in place so that we have order and so that we can be safe. And for that reason, I want to thank the board for enforcing the rules that we have of mask wearing and of the vaccine. Thank you very much for standing up for our students and for what is right for them.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. The last in-person speaker we have is Suahil Nunez.
Actually, um, they're Connor, Chris, and I'm Sarah.
Oh, okay. Sorry if I slaughtered your name, and I apologize. Perfect. Okay, we have.
And then we have the people who signed up for remotely to provide public comments.
Correct. That's what I said. We have, we have one person, I believe, signed up. Perfect. Okay. So, all right. So we have one person, I believe, signed up for online comment. Ron, get that signed up for us. Sounds like we're on hold. Mr. Cone?
I think. He's working on it. I can. We'll try to distribute this to him. Okay. He's trying to cut. All new tonight.
This is all, we're all going to fumble through this here as best we can.
David Hall is online to talk to the board.
Okay, Mr. Hall, you have two minutes. Can you hear us?
Yes.
Yes, sir. We can hear you.
Go ahead.
Okay. Can people there hear me? It's looking like.
Yes, sir, we can.
Elevator music.
Yes. You're 15 seconds behind watching the video at home.
Okay. All right. So when I begin?
Yes, please. Please begin.
Please begin.
Right. For over 20 months now, we've been telling students that they must do as they're told if they want life to return to normal. Stay home, stay safe, log in, pay attention, come to school, cover your face, get your shot, cover your face. Don't forget to be safe. Everything that's applied, even when they're healthy, this has introduced a culture of climate and worry and has had negative effects on morale and hopefully future. At no time in history has anyone ever been in a dire situation. Whenever I think that a dire situation, someone may pass infection, someone else may have it. As a teacher, I would give the lack of motivation and I'm certain this dynamic is a cheap cost. Teaching and administrative role now seems out of bounds to compliance officials. And now it's back to the climate of suspicion for all sides but primarily targeted students. This is not a dire situation. There's a distinct cost to this climate. It is not just a mask. There is one more impediment to equitable learning. At this point, everyone feels at great risk of the giant habit mitigating. Reputable expert voices and health and science have made this place elusive much as covered top journalists, including the case against mask syndrome while sweeping on August 18, 2021. Many other states have defended mandates in schools and the rate of infection, no different than in other parts, are permanent. My experience, question is directed, the enforcement state of the rules must be followed and have no right or ability to go against them. This is valid and correct. If we do not agree with something, we can voice opposition. As of now, it appears local schools have only accepted and defended mandates to the detriment of those who sit. Masks and vaccines should be optional, too. It is not a question of science or politics but of personal choice. Any stakeholders can see that the quality of life that children have been damaged to an unmeasurable degree. We talk about diversity and equity but not regarding individual choice. Instead, we offer only compliance for all. Generations before us have created a high price for freedom of conscience and schools should defend such principles. And my deepest conviction, mandates are a betrayal of our students. And I call on students, parents, teachers, and district administrators to stand up for the right to defend, ask questions, and get reasonable answers, such as, how much longer will they be conditioned upon public school access? Will not submit opt-in. If so, when and on what condition will that be? When will the common norm return? Thanks very much for hearing me and I hope to see everybody in person again even more than I could be there myself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. I believe we have one more gentleman who is trying, wanted to speak. Did not sign up. Ma'am, sir, can I have your name, please?
Yes, my name is John Trumbo.
Trumbo.
I'm here for basically two reasons. One of them is to be pleased with the constitution of the board and with the newly-enlightened members of the board, invited to how you have Gabe or part of your body. And I know that they will offer great wisdom and life experience that will be valuable to you as you go forward in the next couple of years. I'm just encouraging you all, you to work together and do well. I'm glad for that. My second point is this, that what you see is someone who is not in favor of a mask mandate. I'm wearing this mask out of courtesy to all of you, everyone in this room, but I want you to clearly understand it's my mask and it's my choice. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Trumbo. Okay, so that will conclude the communications from parent staff and district residents. We've got a couple of things that we want to follow up on. So.
Mr. Connors, there's one additional person who didn't have the opportunity to sign up, so I will leave that to you.
All right. We will allow, allow one more. And we need to get on to our business.
And I just want to do a sound check. Ms. Chastain, can, can you hear me when I'm speaking?
It's not working.
You can't hear me? Okay. And you're, it sounds like we're having trouble hearing Mr. Connors as well.
I'll talk louder.
If he's the speaker, could you have his mask out there as a speaker?
At the podiums. That's the rules.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Your name, please.
We see that went up in the rules in the future.
Yeah, I should.
Randy?
I've had, um, five kids, uh, go through the Indian School District. I've had five kids go through the Indian School District. And two of them are already out. I've got three that have left. You know, these mandates, I think I have the mask mandate, the push for having a shot or testing for school or extracurricular activities, that's not okay. It's not okay on the kids and it's not okay on our staff. We lost a lot of staff due to these mandates. Really good teachers, really good people. I don't know if anybody realizes, but I saw the looks on, on the secretary spaces in the office the day of the deadline. And they're looking at those kids as they're coming around the corner, getting ready for the choir, going through the music crew. They're cheering up because they're having to make a choice between being around those kids that bring so much joy into their lives. And they love being here for them. They love being here teaching them. They do this because they love it. They don't do it for a paycheck. That helps them get by. That helps them pay their bills. But this is something that they wake up every morning, every morning, every day. These teachers, they go through summer, re-education, you know, keeping up on, on, on the things that they need to be able to teach to the kids. They're committed. Their whole lives are committed to this, to raising the next generation. And a choice was forced on them and that's not okay. Where they have to choose like that and that's not okay. It's also not okay for these kids to have to choose whether to take a test or get their shot. So they can go to the homecoming dance. That was ridiculous. Thank goodness there were some good people out there that set something up privately, gave them an option and gave them a better option. As a matter of fact, the smart ones, the smart kids, went and returned their, their tickets to their schools that were mandating everything, and they went to pay $5 entrance for an indoor, warm, fun dance.
Ms. Taylor, your, your time's.
Okay. Okay. Um, yeah, that's my stance on the mandates. That's the shots, that's the masks, that's the testing, and that's for teachers and students.
Okay. We're gonna, got a couple of things we need to follow up with.
I will do that.
You have everything written down? We've got.
I, I took good notes and I've got the contact information there, so I will follow up.
Wonderful. Okay. We are going to go on to, next thing on agenda is the consent items. Hope we, our new board members read through all our consent items. There's quite a bit of stuff to go through. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we accept consent items as written.
Second.
I have a first and a second. How do you take the roll call vote, please?
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sundvid?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, superintendent, board member reports. Dr. Pierce, I'm sure you have lots of information for us today.
I'm just going to check the sound. Sound okay? Okay. So I do have a few items for superintendents to report this evening. First, I wanted to pass along a message from former President Dawn Adams. She reached out today to ask that I please, she said, please pass on best wishes to Gabe and Mica and their new roles, and she wanted to thank the board for their commitment to being servants in such an incredibly important role in our community. She said she will miss serving in our community and trusts that with our strong and capable administration and new board dynamics, that the district will be led into the future in good hands. So I wanted to pass along those congratulations from Ms. Adams. And then I have three other items to report on this evening. First, I wanted to provide an update on the consultation process with the Yakama Nation. So just by way, as a reminder and update for everyone, House Bill 1356 was passed by the legislature into law during the last legislative session. The new law prohibits the use of Native American names, symbols, or images as mascots, logos, or team names unless authorized by the nearest federally recognized tribe. If the tribe approves to, us to use the mascot and logo and images, we can continue to use them. If not, the schools must change those mascots. So as the board knows, we have, you know, been in conversation about this and I've done numerous reports on this over the past several months. We began consultation formally with the Yakama Nation earlier this year, and Elise Wassines, who's the manager of the higher Yakama Nation Higher Education and AVP, she was a special guest at the last board meeting and in November and reported to the board. She reiterated at that time information. I think I lost. Oh, it's back. Okay. I'm going to put it back here, Ron. Okay. Elise reiterated some information that was shared by the board previously regarding the, the need for us to change the legacy mascot based on our consultation with the tribe. And Legacy Principal Paul Osborne is here tonight. It's an agenda item. He'll share the work of the renaming committee and present a recommendation to the board for a new mascot for Legacy. At the last board meeting, Elise also shared that it was the intent of the tribal council to pass a resolution to enter into a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with the district regarding approving the continued use of the Braves mascot at Kamaiakin High School with some changes needing to occur to some of the mascot symbols and imagery around the school. So earlier this week, on Monday evening, we did receive notification from the Yakama Tribal Council that they had approved the request for consultation at their December 7th meeting. So yesterday, we went to Tappanish. I went along with Assistant Superintendent Jack Anderson, Principal Chris Chellin, and Ms. Chastain, and presented again to the tribal council and continued the consultation process with them. And at the meeting, the tribal council did pass a resolution to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the district to allow continued use of the Braves name and mascot until January 2023. And between now and then, we will collaborate with the Yakama Education Committee and continue consultation with the tribal council to redesign and update imagery in use around the school. consultation with the tribal council to redesign and update imagery in use around the school to ensure that the images in use are honoring to the tribe. And so we're very pleased and grateful for the Yakama Tribal Council's decision, and we look forward to this next phase of consultation and time to build an ongoing positive and collaborative relationship with the Yakama Nation. So that's an update, just as of yesterday, on where we are with our mascots. The second brief update I want to share is, I did make updates to the board's legislative priorities document that was discussed at a recent meeting. And now that the board's elected a new president, vice president, and legislative rep, I will proceed with getting the meetings scheduled with legislators. So our practice is for up to two board members and myself to meet with legislators ideally prior to the start of session, which begins this next year in January, on January 10th. So I will want to confirm, and I can get that information from you after the meeting, who, in addition, historically, it's the legislative rep and another board member and myself, so I'll just want to confirm who would like to be a part of those meetings, and I'll get those, I'll connect with our legislators and get those on the calendar. And I will say that that is also an opportunity for us to convey to our lawmakers and the people who work in Olympia and work closest with the governor, what we're hearing from our community. And so in addition to what's, you know, formally on the board legislative priorities, it is a good opportunity for us to share, for you to share as elected officials, to other elected officials who are in Olympia, what the feedback we're getting from our community. Finally, new board member orientation. I just wanted to say that it was great to have an opportunity to spend some time with Mr. Galbraith and Mr. Valentine at the WASTA conference, and we all attended the new board member boot camp session. And now that they have taken the oath of office and officially joined the board, and now that we have a president, I'll work on setting up meetings for the board president, Mr. Connors, and I to meet individually with each of you and share information, answer questions, get some more in-depth district-specific orientation. And then also, the upcoming January board retreat will be a great opportunity for the board to discuss operations and relations. That was a goal that the board identified last year, that that's an area that they, you all, wanted to focus on, so that'll be a great opportunity for that. We'll also have an executive session scheduled as part of the retreat for legal information and updates in both Bronson Brown, our district legal counsel, and Mick McFarland, who many of you have met, will be present for that. And those are my updates to share.
Wonderful, thank you. Do you have any board member reports?
Mr. Connors, do you want Zach to go next?
Oh, Zach, yeah, that's not a problem. Zach, if you'd like to go, that'd be great.
Well, I did.
I'm new at this, too.
All right, I'm not logged into this computer, so I'm going to have to read it from my phone, but I took a photo, so everyone can hear all right? Okay, perfect. So first of all, I wanted to say, Kenwick High School is leading a food drive, and we're working with the National Guard and the Tri-Cities Food Bank to involve, I would say, we have close to 20 different locations, so some of that, one of them's here in the district admin building, but we're partnering with a bunch of elementary schools, middle schools, and Kamaiakun High School to provide that food drive. And it's awesome that we have that opportunity. Just today, I got to be at Lincoln and see those students, and see some students, which was awesome, be in elementary school, which I hadn't done in a while, and they had so much food, so it was really, really great to see. And I can't wait, I believe you're doing pickup on the 16th, so I'm really excited to see the commitment that our families have to helping get food on the tables, especially comes up to the holiday season. I was a part of the student superintendent advisory council, and we, students primarily set the topics, and this topic was reviewing the district dress code. And so I thought it was really a great opportunity to, in an hour, discuss a very depthy, I don't know what better word for that, very depthy topic with a lot of various perspectives and views. And what I thought was really well done about that is, we did small group, kind of breakouts on the side, but then came back as a group, and what I really, really enjoyed is, you know, administration was able to share what some of their priorities are, and students were able to share what some of our priorities are, and it kind of was able to be a really productive discussion, so I really enjoyed that. And what I also think is really valuable about those meetings is students set the agenda primarily. Sometimes the district has some topics they like to see included, but generally speaking, it's a student-led agenda, and so I really appreciate that direction with it, because it really makes sure that the priorities that are on top of students' minds are being addressed. I was in, working with the WASA Student Rep Network, I was asked to speak at the Public Schools Employees of Washington, they had a conference about student engagement, and so I was able to speak along with three other reps from Washington State and kind of provide what student advocacy looks like. And we were able to get some questions, and it was a really, really great opportunity. The WASA Student Rep Network, we had our meeting, we meet twice, twice a week, or twice a month, which is why we hear about it in every board meeting. We debriefed WASTA and discussed providing, or continued our discussion on providing guidance to the school districts on how to best utilize their student reps. And Dr. Pierce and I are working on combining our very busy schedules to find a time that I can start that process and providing some of the guidance. They don't have the official guidance out, but I kind of have an idea of what's going into it. But as you heard, she's been traveling, and I know she's been in our schools a bunch lately, so we're going to meet up at some point. Yeah, WASA debrief, so I got to join in going to WASA, and I appreciate this board and the district making it a priority for me to go. I found it really valuable. I got to be in a student voice workshop where I networked with student reps across the state. I got to meet my colleagues, student reps from Pasco, which was really cool, and I got introduced with a few board members in Richland who were interested in starting a student rep position in Richland. And so a lot of great opportunities came out of that, so I just wanted to say thank you. That's everything I have, so thank you.
Excellent. Okay, now we'll move on to other board members. Yes? Does that, any other board members?
Yeah, we attended the WASTA conference this last couple of weeks back before Thanksgiving. I would say the boot camp was very enlightening in terms of how they assist new board members, and the conference overall was a little bit different than I expected, but, you know, we'll see how it goes and be back next year.
Yeah, so I went there. We, I thought there was a lot of, I was a little surprised at how little, you know, budget, learning, stuff like that was available. I tried to take, oh, I went there expecting to kind of learn about budgets and all that stuff, and I was surprised that that wasn't very available. So I ended up taking several equity classes. And I even took a budgeting for equity class, and I don't think we really even talked about budgeting, but we did talk a lot about equity. So I really left with mixed feelings about the WASTA, so I'm looking forward to getting involved on that side and kind of communicating with them a little bit. And I feel like if this community right here went to, or at least what we heard from our 14 speakers, I think if they went to that conference, they would probably be outraged. That's my opinion. Oh, we have, yeah.
We'll work on that. Okay, Ms. Sundvik, do you have a report?
I do, sorry, busy taking notes here. So I did not attend in person WASA, I was online because we had some family-in-law, sorry, some family-in-law medical issues. So it was wonderful to be able to see all of that and do all of that. That was two days of lots of information, and I always appreciate that. There's something called the Professional Educator Standard Board that helps with our classified staff and teaching staff, and so they meet monthly usually, sometimes more. And TVW is where we can access that information, so I was able to...
While I speak.
While I speak, it's able to do that.
Please, this is not time for public comment.
I can put it back on, I got it on. If you'd like me to, I can clarify what the rule is. I will put it back on, it's not an issue. I usually do leave it on, actually, so. So anyway, Professional Educator Standard Board, which was very interesting, they, and then I also did one with the Joint Legislature Audit and Review Committee. Both of those groups are talking about our school employees' benefit board and what may be happening with our insurances and those types of things, and so it's good to stay on top of that, although I know that our business people do that all the time. Key Connections, which we are a partner with, the Health Department on keeping our youth's drug and tobacco safe. Ben Franklin Transit Now has a Mobility Access Task Force, and part of that is a dial-a-ride subgroup that I attend, and many of our students and also some of our staff also use dial-a-ride, and so they're trying to streamline that process and make it a little easier for their clients and our students. Education Week Seminar on helping our parents of English language learners, helping them have an improved outreach and some strategies that they can use. I'm trying to see what else. Partial of the RSD Board Workshop last, the other day, I was not able to do all of that. And then yesterday was the Ledge Reps Learn, which, there's one more left before the session in January. So that was on funding and allocations, and we had TJ Kelly from OSPI, Dan Steele from WASA, Dan Lunghoffer, who's one of our WASTA main accountants, and somebody from the State Board of Education also. Lots of discussion about legislative priorities, emphasizing the need for investments in special education and other programs to actually reflect district needs rather than the prototypical school model, which, just a quick way to look at the prototypical school is, there are not enough students in the whole state of Washington to pay for one school psychologist. So it's a bit of a mess, and so hopefully, we will be able to get some of that taken care of. And then tomorrow is another installment of the OSPI Budget Calendar Initiative, Balance Calendar Initiative series that we've, it's been going on for years, trying to see if there are some different ways that we can change calendars to make it a little less time off, same amount of time in school, but less time off. So, and that's always very interesting, so that's it.
Wonderful, thank you. Mayberry, anyone?
I don't, I don't have anything to add.
Perfect. There you go, neither do I. Okay, so moving on to reports and discussions. Oh, you have something?
Just a point of an ask. We have a couple of guests this evening, Mr. Paul Randall and Mr. Mike Johnson, and would it be possible for us to have them go first and then move Vic to third in our order of reports?
Vic's not going anywhere. That's not a problem. Okay, so we'll move, all right, so we're going to go talk about Delta first? Perfect.
So I will just very quickly introduce Mr. Mike Johnson, who is the principal of Delta High School, and so typically an annual report given to the board, and with that, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Thank you very much, nice to see all of you and see the new board members here. Just want to give you kind of a little bit of history about Delta since we do have some new people here and maybe in the community as well who don't know as much about Delta High School. First of all, our mission, Delta is a small, highly personalized high school that attracts a broad spectrum of students who are immersed in science, technology, engineering, and math learning experiences. We integrate the humanities and STEM fields to prepare students to succeed in post-secondary education, careers, and citizenship, and learning parallels how scientists, engineers, and mathematicians conduct inquiries, solve problems, and expand knowledge with learning partnerships that connect academic learning to the world beyond the classroom. So that's kind of really quick, who we are. We're also, if you're not familiar, we're an inclusive public program of the Kenwick, Pasco, and Richland school districts. All students are selected by a random lottery. So really quick overview, we have a rigorous STEM program, we have lots of hands-on opportunities for learning for our students, and a lot of that is done through project-based learning, which we have in pretty much all of our classes, there's at least one project per trimester. We prepare students to get ready for college-level work and industry after graduation, and work-based learning is also a big part of our program, which I'll discuss a little bit further in the presentation. We opened in 2009 with the first class of freshmen on a temporary campus in Richland. In 2014-15, they built a new campus and opened that facility in Pasco out on Broadmoor Boulevard in September 2015. Pasco School District is a fiscal agent for Delta, and they also support our building and all of our technology needs. We have students and teachers from all districts, yes, sir?
For the audience's sake and my sake, could you explain fiscal agent?
They work with our budget.
And how that ties in with the other school districts? I just want to clarify that we all contribute to the...
Yes, all three districts contribute. I'll get to a little bit more there in a minute, but we have 400, we're budgeted at 400 students, even though we usually have a bit more than that. And it's based on a percentage of students, of secondary students at each district. So Kenwick has slightly more secondary students than Pasco, and a fair amount more than Richland, so it's, I think it's roughly 37% of our kids are Kenwick that we admit each year, and so Kenwick contributes about 30%, 37% of the budget, and then similarly for the other districts as well. So because the building's located in Pasco, they take over some of those responsibilities, but it's equally funded by the districts based on that percentage.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Students generally attend Delta all four years and attend a Delta graduation. However, their diplomas are actually from their home high schools, so from our three partner school districts. They're considered students at those schools while attending Delta STEM High School. So a student might be a Kamaiakun student, but they attend Delta for their program. And so when they get a transcript at the end of their four years, it says Kamaiakun High School, but it shows that they participated in the Delta STEM program for their education for those four years. And as such, they're also allowed to participate in opportunities like sports and things back at their home high school, as well as clubs and other events at our school. So they're kind of like dual citizens when they're at our school. We have many community partners, we have our three school districts, we have partnerships also with Central Washington University and Columbia Basin College. We work at times with the Washington STEM Foundation and Patel and other companies throughout the area we partner with as well. We have lots of events that we generally have on an annual basis. A few of the ones I highlighted on here, we have, in the past month or so, we've had mock interviews where students, we have about 45, 50 community members come in and do interviews for our students to prepare them for future careers, and also for our intern program that we have in the spring, preparing students for internships during their senior year of high school. We have college tours. A little over a month ago, we went out to Central Washington University, WSU, Walla Walla Community College, WC Tri-Cities, and CDC as well. So opportunities for kids to get out and see some different opportunities. And we have showcase nights three times a year, highlighting some of the projects that students are doing throughout our school. Our community can come in and observe and kind of see what's been happening at Delta over the last year. Unfortunately, they're usually on nights that you guys have four meetings. So at the start of our year, here's what our enrollment looked like this year. You can see the 48, 45, 36, that's our general number for starting each year, actually, it's usually 48, 46, and 36 are the numbers that we enroll, 130 students at the start of each year. I think on the day of that enrollment, we had had one student drop out, and then we added another one a couple of days later. So there's the normal annual enrollment. We expect students to make a, what we'd like is for them to commit for four years, but we do say when you start a Delta for a calendar year, you're going to stay through that year, and then if, we have a few that will... And then if, we have a few that will opt out for other programs or move away as well through, over the years. We have college and the high school classes offered at Delta, a pretty significant amount of those. We partner with Central Washington University. And we have Delta teachers that are considered adjunct faculty from Central Washington University. They have to apply and be approved as adjunct faculty. We have English courses, sociology, IT, physics courses, and a vast number of math courses that students can take at Delta for college credit. We have many students that actually end up at our, end of their four years with over 60 credits of, from Central Washington University when they leave Delta, which is really helpful when you start off in your college career with 60 or more credits. We also did pilot, just starting last year, we piloted a running start program with CBC, where students are generally staying at Delta for 80% or more of their day and taking some courses online or potentially on campus at CBC. And they're able to get an AA at the same time as they complete their Delta graduation program, so. Work-based learning, I mentioned a little bit earlier. We have, many of our seniors are able to gather enough credits during their first three years at Delta to have opportunities to take part of their day to do work-based learning. So we have, we try and tailor that program so that students are finding something that they're, have a career interest in. So we have students like this young lady here went out and worked at PNNL. We have other students that worked in graphic design or worked at Cadlec. All kinds of different opportunities for students. So we seek to place them into industries that will help prepare them for their careers and see if this is what they really want to do. Our participation this year is a little lower during the pandemic. We dropped down to almost nothing because our students can go out on sites. So we're building the program back up. This trimester, at this point, we have about 40% of our seniors are placed into internships out in the community. And we expect that to continue to increase over the next couple of years as things get back. School demographics, vast majority of our students are white and Hispanic with several other as well. We have, generally, we enroll a little bit more in terms of the males and females, although some years that goes back and forth. Our free and reduced lunch rate usually is in the mid 40s. And we usually have probably 10 to 15% of our students served by either an IP or a 504. Don't have data from the last two years because, yes, pandemic, things were a little up in the air. But this is fairly normal, what you'll see in terms of our Delta graduates. A huge, very high percentage are interested in things like engineering, medical, science, education, which generally more math, science focused. But we do have students that are going into all kinds of different careers as well and some into the military. And this was again, two years ago, we had a 90%, 98% graduation rate. And we had total scholarship and grant offers of over $1.8 million for our graduates that year. Right now, applications are open for the class of 2026. We open those on December 1st and it closes on February 10th at 3:00 PM. We'll be out recruiting in our schools over the next couple of months, trying to get that new group of Delta graduates or Delta students. Yes?
When you, when you are doing that, when you are recruiting students, what's, what are you looking for? I mean, what's going to make a student want to go to Delta or consider that over their, their traditional high school?
Generally, it is, you know, those kids that are focused on the same things that we're focused on. If they're, if they have a real interest in science, technology, engineering, math, that's a good reason to come to Delta. It's, some students like it because it's a really, it's a smaller community. We have 400, you know, a little over 400 students. And you really get to know people better in a, you know, in that small environment. But is that, I mean, the kids that are most successful are those kids that are, that are passionate about science, technology, engineering, math, and want to focus on that for a potential future career.
They should probably know this, but class sizes?
They're about normal. I mean, our freshman classes are generally about 32, 33, because we start with a little bit higher at the freshman year because we know there's always some natural attrition over the years. And so when you get to their junior, senior year, classes are a little bit smaller. We have some in there, you know, in the mid 20s, sometimes a little bit lower than that even. Other questions?
Yes, I have, so I don't know, I guess I'll just ask it and we'll figure out from there. Is, do we, how do we provide transportation or do students provide their own transportation?
Both. We have students that live, like, let's say we have a student in Southridge. Who, Southridge is their home high school. If they're normally walk to Southridge, then they can walk to Southridge and catch a Delta, we call it the Delta Shuttle. It's just another bus. But they take the Delta Shuttle to Delta. If a student normally would take a bus to get to Southridge, they take the bus to Southridge and then take the Delta Shuttle over. So.
And then.
And a lot of, and a lot of parents decide to do their own transportation as well. And then when students can drive. Yeah, makes it a lot easier than.
And then, so with enrollment that's small, how many students do we turn away? Do you know that?
Yeah, that's great, good question. About three years ago, we, we actually, three or four years ago, I think my first year at Delta, we actually ended up having two open seats for Kennewick, which we don't ever want to have open seats. And so we put a real focus on recruiting. And the last couple of years, our numbers have been huge. So looking just at Kennewick, our, we take 40 Kennewick students every year into our ninth grade. Last year, I believe it was about 110 applicants. So we had some that turned us down. They say, yeah, maybe it's not right for me, but we still have a waiting list of probably 30 or 40 people that did not get accepted from Kennewick.
So I understand like keeping class sizes small, but if we're turning that many students away, has there been discussion on expanding the program? And if so, why have we kept it this way or?
Yeah. Another great question. Our freshman class, keeping it 130, that puts our class sizes like really at the maximum. I mean, 32, 33 is overload. So teachers are actually, you know, generally get paid a little bit more when their class is that big. So, and our classrooms don't really fit more than that. So adding more kids to the classrooms, we would have to expand the building really to have more rooms for more students. And right now, that's out of bending the schedule.
Okay. So with that double or triple number, who applied? What could students do to be more, I don't know, applicable to you? Or how do you make that decision?
The decision is a random lottery.
Oh, that's right. Sorry, thank you.
So we take, I get the list and then I do a random number generator and we put them in order.
I had forgotten that.
So, so Mr. Johnson, I just want to say thank you for, for what your staff's doing there. I've participated in many of your signature events, mock interviews, resume things. It's always organized. The students are always engaged. And so please just thank you and thank your staff for that because it's great to see the students and how they're engaged and asking questions of leaders and, and business folks in the community. So thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Fantastic staff and our person who organizes those events is Heather Hoppy, our community liaison manager.
Yeah, a lot of the students that I have gotten to know that have gone to Delta have been very happy with the staff and the school culture. So more, like I said, more praise is your way and your, your staff's way.
I have a friend works in a different industry, not in the STEM, but she was one of your mock interview people, was really not really aware of Delta much. And I just said, come on, they need some people. And she was very impressed and all three of her children are going to go there now, she says, so.
Look forward to seeing those.
Johnson, thank you very much, it's great presentation.
Is there no, is there no priority, like Diana's saying, is there, if it's, if it, you know, a sibling goes there, is there no preference to the next sibling?
At this point, there is not, no. No, there's been discussion of that over the years, but there's not a priority.
Alright, any other questions?
Thank you very much, appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on the list is Mr. Randall. Can you come and give a talk about Tri-Tech?
Yes. Uh oh.
Okay, so it just also do a quick introduction to Mr. Randall, who's the director of Tri-Tech. And again, this is an annual presentation that's typically done, and so we appreciate you being here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the invitation and the time. So I'm Paul Randall, I am from Tri-Tech Skill Center, and this is our new addition. If you've been by, it's been awesome to be able to add this 16,000 square feet to the front of the building. Looks, looks a little bit better than the warehouse look we had before. Yeah, we're very fortunate on that. So what is Tri-Tech? Well, we are a cooperative eight, eight different school districts in the region. Kennewick, when we talk about a fiscal host, is our fiscal host. Started in 1981, been around a long time. Visionary thought back in the seventies to create a cooperative technical high school. So we are a branch campus of every single high school. Every junior and senior can attend our regular school year programs for the 540 hour. The summer introductory programs are open to incoming ninth graders. So they get a little taste of what kind of programming they can get in later on. As I mentioned, long history of success. We're a school of choice. Students apply to take one of our 20 different programs. You can see Aubrey here, she's pretty stoked about those wonderful pastries she's doing. And even with a mask, you can see the light in her eye. And so she graduated last year and it was just, those were very awesome puff pastries. So we provide relevant and contextual hands-on learning. The facility replicates the workforce and I can't overemphasize that. When you walk into one of our classrooms or shops, our dental assisting, it looks like a dental clinic. The culinary arts program is wonderful. It is state-of-the-art. It's probably the best in the Pacific Northwest as far as a culinary instruction program. We have industry-standard instruction. When you look at what we teach, it's what you need out in the industry. And our mantra is, what would your employer say? Not only instructionally, but also behaviorally. So with behaviors, if they don't line up with what an employer would say, we try to coach the student along there. There's time to focus. The student stays with us for half their day or three periods. And so they get to build that community in that classroom with a small number of students for all year long because they're year-long courses. So the programs this year, 2021, they've grown over the years. We respond to business and industry requests, so we add and we take away as the industry needs them. A couple of these programs on here, pre-electrical, we started last year and it is full. I could, I've offered two full classrooms, two teachers, four sections, 100 students. There was 111 applications for 54 slots last year. So very high demand. Pre-physical therapy is another one that we started two, four years ago. High demand again. Those students can participate in that two-year program and go right to work as a, as a very well-prepared pre-physical therapy assistant. And if they want to be a PT, it sets the stage well there. So those are the 20 programs that we have today. The role we play is we help students strategically plan with a career in mind. If you think of the cost of college today or post-secondary training, you can get a head start right now as a junior or senior. We prepare for people to go to the workforce and that post-secondary component. You're not done learning when you graduate high school in a profession. It's the, go to the next step. We serve as a capstone for many high school CTE programs and a launching pad to that post-secondary. We provide very rigorous and relevant current tech ed programs. And we're connected and very responsive to business. When electrical contractor came who was working on our school and says, I can't hire anybody. And so he thought, hmm, okay, this might be an opportunity. We work with CITC, which is a non-union training program, as well as the IDEW, which is the union training apprenticeship. And we've put together a program that is really meeting the need of our, of our industry. If you've seen the signs on the corner of Clearwater and Calat, 46 bucks an hour for a journey-level electrician, that's a pretty good wage, not bad. So we have the latest technology. When you walk in, you can see what it looks like in that industry that you're, you're going to be transitioning to. And our students walk away, every single one of them, with a Tri-Tech employer ability profile, portfolio, which is, they know how to do a job application, a resume, they are ready to go. And they have evidence of best work in that content area. So it's pretty powerful. So examples of this advantage, if you look at dental assisting and pre-nursing, pre-physical therapy internships, those students in the second part of the year go out and work in the clinic side by side, real technicians. Our automotive and diesel summer internships are paid and competitive to go to work at McCurley Dental, Corwin. Our Catholic and externship started just this last year. Because of COVID, our students, our nursing students weren't able to go out and finish their certified nursing assistant exam. That put a ripple in the entry-level healthcare workers in our community. So Catholic came to us and said, okay, we've lost 54 future nurses. What are we going to do? And we coordinated, worked with them, and it's a, it's a bridge, a coordinated bridge for those students to step out of our program into Catholic as a nursing assistant. Hey, that's pretty cool. So we got four students right there, they've got a capacity for 18, and we're building that, so looking forward to what happens this summer. If you think about our firefighting and emergency services that in our region, our firefighting students are working as resident firefighters in every district and are in every single one of the municipal fire departments. Very powerful. Construction trades and pre-electrical, the transition to work, every single one of the students who finished up one of our welding, construction, or pre-electrical programs last year, who wanted to go to work, went to work. We were getting called and knocked. I need some workers. They were all gone. They're knocking now for this coming summer. So that's pretty neat to have that pent-up desire for employers to hire our people. Very cool. One of the young men went to work, pre-electrical, $30 an hour out of the gate, graduated Saturday, went to work on Monday. That's not a bad gig, I can tell you that. And that's a five-year apprenticeship that they will grow into. Very powerful. And recently, we, Career Connect Washington is a statewide initiative for workforce development. We have two career-endorsed career launch programs, which is a big deal, which means that there's a paid component of the work site experience for those students out of automotive and diesel and firefighting and emergency medicine. And we're working towards that. So it, it's very cool to grow that launch into a paid part. So examples, these are some of the industry certifications which save employers time and money bringing these new hires on. And so OSHA 10 and 30, I don't need to do that, I've got my OSHA card, I've already got that. Our certified nursing assistant licensure, that's done, they can go directly to work. American Culinary Federation, we certify those students as well in the ACF certification and the American Stars Workforce Registry. We talk about setting a student up for that next step in post-secondary because we don't want to go farther. We have CTE dual credit. We've been keeping track since 2000. You can see right here, over 50,000 credits have been earned by high school students in the program area that they're interested in. So they save, like here, over $6 million in tuition and not counting the books, not counting the technical fees, all of those other things that a student has to pay or mom and dad has to pay. These students are saving and not incurring debt. So that's pretty cool too. So that in the nutshell, I guess this is my reminder slide. We've got demographic, demographic data coming up. So the split here, we have 814 students in our October count. This is down from typical, we should have a little over 900 students, that's very normal. Kennewick School District represents about 36% or 295, four of those kiddos. Pasco, 214, and Richland, 142. Small school districts, about 20%. Gender, very similar to Delta, that was interesting to see the Delta split there. This is not typical for us. We usually have about a 50/50 male/female, so it's a little bit higher on the, on the male side this year. As far as special populations, spot on, about 15% special ed, about 5% five and four, and 80% no designation. So that's kind of who makes up the Tri-Tech population. So with that, I'm open to questions or comments about Tri-Tech.
Well, it sounds great. Sounds awesome. Sounds like you're doing a great job. My question would be kind of the same, the same line of questions as before is, is how do you admit students? And then one, another thing that was actually brought up at the WASDA conference was the construction industry and how there's such demand for that. And then is there any options or thoughts about expanding or adding new different, new, new things? Can everybody hear me?
So the first part of the question is how do kids get to us? So ever, since we are a branch campus of every single high school, they apply through their home high school counselor. It's an online application. The students sign up, but all of those go back to the counselor to make sure that they are on track to graduate. Because we need, graduation is job one for them to be employed.
It's not from the junior, senior year thing, right?
Correct, exactly. So if you hop on our website, starting in, in late January, you'll see that apply here. But that's the, essentially the entry port to get it, to apply for a particular program. So that's where it starts. Our programs are year-long programs, and so you commit to a year to attend a Tri-Tech program. So that's how the students get there. As far as new programs, we're always looking at new programs. So today, I was working on our 10-year capital plan. So programs drive capital requests to the state of Washington. So programs drive capital requests to the state of Washington. Skill centers give capital money through the state budget rather than local bonding. So with that, we look at programs that are coming up. We're looking at operating engineers, we're looking at plumbing trades, we're looking at the HVACR to heating, ventilation, and refrigeration. All of these are good livable wages and they are also growing in occupational demand. Some of them upwards to 20%, 25% growth in the next 10 years. So this is a good bet for us to build a program and, and put kids in it and they have a good wage, a good career wage. Are you okay answering your question?
Yeah, yeah. The only other comment I would, I would make is I know that when my daughter was considering that school as, as a nurse, you know, I know we talked to our counselor and I, and looking back now, I don't know that our counselor quite, the counselor quite had all that information. So I would just encourage you to, to really make sure that you're communicating well with the, with the counselors, that they can give good advice and, that sounds wonderful.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just comment that I know quite a few people that are a part of TRITech and I, like I said, I only hear great things. And like you said, it's an amazing opportunity for our students to get either into living wages, out of high school, or continue with a shortened path to get to whatever that destination is. I did want to ask, so with Delta, we reject quite a few students. My understanding is that's not quite how TRITech works, so could you comment on that?
So ask that question, I didn't hear that last part.
Sorry, like rejecting, not rejecting per se, but if we, we have capacity limits on some of the programs, are students usually able to find the program that they want?
So it's very program dependent. So if you look at our, our high-demand programs, dental assisting, welding technology, pre-electrical, those are competitive programs to get into. We use a lottery system as well. And so to make it fair and equitable to the students. So it is very program dependent. Some programs, like I'd say video game design right now, which is a computer science program, we have room for students to start and accept whoever applies. But the other programs, we prioritize seniors because that is their last shot as a senior. If they're a junior and not beginning, that's good. But it's program dependent on how we can put kids in.
Are we, are we working on expanding the, the programs that are high need? And it sounds kind of like we are if we're working with the state.
Absolutely. So if you go back to 2005 and 2006, we had 540 students. Today, we typically, without COVID, would have over 900 students. 14 programs then, 20 programs now. So we expand to meet the need. But we expand not just to expand, we expand where we can help kids get a job and start that career path. That's where we expand.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll just say, as a daughter of a vocational skills director and, and one of the people who helped set this up through the state and the mother of a child who went through Tony Maluski's construction trades class, you guys do great, great work. And even though you may not go into that exact trade, the things that they learn there from my own child and then other students that I know, they still go, go with them. So whether it's be on time, work hard, listen to your boss, whatever it may be, those are transferable skills. So we may not stay in construction trades, but they're still very transferable skills. So I drive by there almost every day. I'm so impressed. You guys do a great, great job, so thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Randall. Okay, so if we're going, popping around in order, what would, what would you like to do next? Vic, all right. Mr. Roberts.
The money.
Exactly.
All right, thanks. We're going to do a little bit of closeouts on last year's budget. Not, not a ton of information, but enough to hopefully get you familiar and then look a little bit at this year. I think Zachary said not too definitely.
I don't know if that's a word.
It is now.
The jury's still out on that one.
Maybe a 100,000 foot type picture of that. So usually when we start out, we always start out with enrollment. That's what drives the money around here, so that's one of the most important topics that we deal with. And you can see from the slide here, last year, we budgeted, and the top section here is really the money that's a little more flexible, basic ed. The bottom section, these are programs like TRITech, you heard Paul and some of these other programs, where the money really stays with that program. So you can't really move that money around as much. If it's for TRITech, it stays with TRITech. Career and Tech stays with Career and Tech. So any of the top section there, the budget, we had about, we budgeted 16,804 for your basic ed population. We deal in full-time equivalents, so it's not a headcount. It's, if a, if a student goes halftime, it's a point five. So, so that's how we get paid. And you can see the years before here, you know, we were budgeting pretty consistent with 1920, the pre-COVID, pretty much. And the actual was down 16,003, down 522 students. That's roughly about $4.5 million. You get about $8,500 per FTE. So, so that's the math there. The elementary, we, you know, focus a lot on kindergarten and elementary. You know, your kindergarten is important as those kids, you know, go through the system for second, third grade. And we just didn't have a lot there in 2021. We'd like to get back up here to 1,400, but that hasn't happened for a while. But that was some COVID impact there. You can see the MCP program down here, it did have more than budget as kids went to that online program during 2021. And then these other programs at the bottom, middle school, career and tech ed, sometimes it's called CTE, high school, that's been a growing program there. And then you see TRITech, you know, not, not as much as Paul would have liked, but, and, and for this year, I think that's down a little bit, too. And then our Running Start program, those are pass-through money there. CBC, Open Doors, those are pass-through programs. Open Doors is a program for kids that hadn't graduated and can go back through with CBC or the ESD, Educational Service District, they have a program. Those kids offsite that they can get their degree. And that's been going pretty well. Running Start, that's pass-through money. You know, it's 341 kids, we get an allocation for that, and that goes straight to CBC. We get to take a little bit of overhead off that. And then down here at the bottom, special ed, you see 2,400, a conservative budget. You know, we had 2,423 the year before, but with the pandemic, you know, kids stayed home and it was down considerably, down 125 from budget. And that's probably about 1.2 or 3 million dollars. And then here's our free and reduced rate at the bottom, it was 55.6%. And that does drive various funding pots of money, not significant, but there are some programs that, that will drive some money. So that's the enrollment recap there. Do you see Legacy Online? I missed that one up there. And that is, now we have Endeavor as part of that program, but last year was just Legacy Online. And then here's, these first three columns are basically the adopted budget and projections. So the 2021 budget there, we adopted 272 million and 277 million of expenditures and a deficit of 4.9 million. And normally, you know, we don't fill all the positions and we can usually make up about 5 million pretty easy and end up breaking even. So when we did that budget, you know, we pretty much said, well, we should be able to break even, we manage the budget. You know, sometimes there's, you know, staff aren't filled, you know, open positions, maybe get a little more revenue than we thought and be fine. But then, you know, COVID came on and we, normally through the year, we do a projection. So we adopt the budget, then, you know, pretty much December, we have a pretty good idea of enrollment and where we're going to be with a lot of revenue. So our projections then came in about 258 million after adjusting for enrollment being down, you know, with the pandemic and staying home. And then down here, we would project salaries and benefits. So we had a lot of positions last year that weren't filled and we projected that lower. And then some of the costs here in the, what's called the material supply and operating costs down here, the MSOC, we brought that down to about 36.9. And then the column, the next column is, is the actual without the ESTRA money that we got reimbursed. So you see the top, property taxes and levy equalization, that's about 31, 32 million. And that is important now because we're going out trying to get the levy. And this is, this is what the levy, you know, is, is worth to us, about $32 million. So if the levy doesn't pass, you don't get the property taxes and you don't get the levy equalization, which is an adjustment for, for areas that maybe don't have as high as assessed value. Like a Seattle, they can generate way more money than us because of their, their, their high assessed value. They can levy a tax of a nickel and maybe get $50 million. We levy a tax of a nickel, we might get, you know, $500,000 or probably less. So that, they do an adjustment formula and you only get that if you pass your levy. And then down here, so the state revenue was down, obviously with enrollment being down, that dropped off. Some of this other revenue, there's some food service, about a million dollars that we generate for all the cart sales, you know, kids going in and buying snacks. Of course, that, that couldn't happen. And then down here on the expenditures, so, you know, salaries were down, you know, just a lot of positions not filled during the pandemic and people staying home and things. And then the supplies and purchase services, down from the budget, but about 37 million there. So without, without the ESTRA money, it would have been a $7.2 million deficit. That would have brought our fund balance, here's the beginning of fund balance, 38.8 million. And that would have brought that down to about 31.5 million, which is a pretty significant hit. So then the next slide here, then we put in, we did get reimbursed for ESTRA funding, about 12.6 million. And then that changed, you know, replenished the revenue pretty much, 271 million, expenditures of 266. So we actually, 5.3 million to the good, and the fund balance went up from 38.8 to 44.1. So, and the fund balance, you know, we, we kind of look at that over the next two or three years, given enrollment and things, we, you know, might be dipping into that a little bit. That's what districts use the fund balance for, you know, help balance the budget and, and, you know, if there's certain projects and different things that can come out of there, that's sometimes earmarked for that. So a little different look, same numbers here, but this is by program. So the top portion is really the, the non, the basic ed type of money and expenditures. So, you know, when we did the budgets last spring and early summer, we always talked about, you know, the, the money that we could really is more flexible and that we need to be concerned about. And remember, we adopted a budget that had a $10 million deficit, then we'd use some ESTRA money for this, you know, current budget in the current year. But, so back here, the top, this is a more flexible state basic ed funding, that's enrollment-driven. So you can see we're down, the enrollment caused that to, to drop off. And then, or actually in the hole, they're expenditure-wise versus revenue. And special ed, that's the revenue driven by those 2,000, 30, 2,275 kids. And then the expenditure's there, so, you know, that's kind of in the hole, but that's generally special ed, you use your local money to help with that. And then transportation, that funding is driven by ridership. So the revenue was down because we didn't have as much riders based on COVID for, for one quarter of that formula. And then expenditures there exceeding the revenue. So in the hole a little bit there, and that again, we use property tax money and levy equalization to help with that. And then down the bottom, you see the various programs. So Running Start, that's the pass-through money program, you get the revenue, 3 million, and then 2.6 expenditures, and then some, some money for overhead. Open Doors is TRITech Skill Center, Paul's program. So some of this money here is, is carried over, it has to stay with that program. And some of the money is also for overhead. So for TRITech, there's some administrative costs that, that come back to the district and can be used to offset some other, other costs. Career and technical education, the federal title program, 7.7 million of revenue, 7.4 million expenditures. And this is pretty much overhead here to, to run those programs. The LAP program, that's for kids that are below grade level, certain poverty schools get more than other schools. And you see most of that money spent, this would be mostly carried over for the next year. Bilingual program for the students that are, that are multilingual and to support that. Early childhood education is our ECAT program. That's where, over here at the ALMISTAD, there's portable setup for that program. And those are kids, what, what's the age there? Under four, I think?
Three to three, three to five.
Three to five. And just moving down, there's our food service program, 8.2 million of revenue. And with the pandemic, we did get, we've been helped out by the federal government, so that, that program did pretty well. 7.7 million in cost, and that's 423,000 to the good. We get national board funding for, for teachers that have that certification. And you see, it's 1.4 million. And then down here's the ESTRA money we got, or received. And again, down here, 5.3 million surplus and the same revenue and expenditure numbers you saw in the previous slide here. So that's a different look. Like I said, when we talk about budget, sometimes we, we don't spend a lot of time on this bottom part because a lot of this money really is pretty much earmarked and we, we just can't, it's not as flexible to apply towards, you know, solve some of our budget areas. And then here's some slides here, the lost revenue from COVID, basic ed enrollment, about 4.6 million. Special ed, I'm spelling it there, transportation, so there's some of those. ESTRA cost reimbursed, here's the 12.6 million, you know, what did that, what did that fund with the PPE? Curriculum, IT, hybrid, online learning, different software and things with that. Online Academy was a program that we, we started, you know, last year and that staff was pretty much funded with the ESTRA funds. Transportation staff, a lot of the shortage there with the, the revenue from the state for transportation, a lot of those staff. The idea was you're supposed to maintain your staff during COVID, so there was a pretty big chunk there that went towards funding transportation operations. And there's just maintaining all our other staff areas, keeping them home. And then our ESTRA funding, 58.6 million, 7 million, that's our allocation. You have to use that, that has to, by August 31st, 2024, that's when it expires and, you know, you would have to turn some of that money back. So you get overhead off that, so about 5.8 million, you know, if you get reimbursed, you get some administrative costs. We expect to have used 20 million of ESTRA funds by the end of August 31st, 2022. So that leaves 30 million for the next two years after that. And 20% of the ESTRA 3, well, right here, actually, this is 7.5 million, has to be spent on learning loss, learning recovery. We have some things we've put in place, some tutoring and things, but it has to be really targeted towards kids' instruction. And then the fund balance, as I said, that's an important aspect of the budget and financial situation, is that's kind of like your equity, your money that you can, can solve some problems and then help with cash flow throughout the year. And, and looking forward, you know, can, can use that to offset some, some deficits projected. So you see up here, TRITech does have their own pot of money. And some of that actually probably will be spent transferring to the capital fund, here down a million dollars. As, as Paul's trying to look at storage or bigger warehouse area, we have some programs that need that type of space. And then there's some building carryover. Here's a career and technical education earmarked money, the learning assistance program, and some various other money here. 26.9 million is basically stabilization for the next two or three years. And then we have a minimum fund balance policy, 3% to 5% of the budget. This is about 3.4% of the current budget of about 285 million. And then here's a, a little more detail. So this is your, your non-staff cost, your material supply, operating cost, a little hard to read, but you can take that back with you. And this is based on activity. So the state has different ways they would like to categorize cost. One of them is by activity. So the board of directors is a, is a required reporting, accounting area, as are all these other ones. So this is a, a different way to just kind of look, well, where, where's all that 37 million dollars going that's non-staff related? You can kind of go through the list here. The board of directors, you're required to put some, some legal, the laws, the dues, election costs come out of that activity. The, the audit of the district comes out of that activity. And all the, each one of these is about probably fifty thousand dollars and that's how you get two hundred and twenty or close. And then just moving down the list here, some of the, the bigger ones, all the classroom and instruction, that's all pretty much to support the classroom, the supplies and those things. Career and technical education, a pretty big chunk of that is, goes to Delta, those Delta kids. And the running start, they have to flow through some of that money. So Delta has a hundred fifty-two kids, about thirty of those kids are CTE. So that they get that money, that, that CTE Delta money has to go back to Pasco to fund that program. And just looking down the list here, we did have a large curriculum adoption, see here, four point nine million. So about two point eight of that was for language arts and that was an expensive one there. Food service, below budget there, it's based on meals served, not as many meals with COVID. And then down the list here, so utilities, we budgeted three point six million, it costs three million, part of that below budget because of COVID, people not in school as much. And then we did budget, like, we budgeted Kennewick High at, assuming Kennewick High is operational. Otherwise, we would have taken a couple hundred thousand dollars out of there and then added back. Kennewick High was offline, but we still maintained that budget, so we wouldn't lose track of it. So that's another reason why that's below, as Kennewick High went to Fruehlund. Fruehlund is old, but fairly efficient in terms of heating.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Then down the list, insurance liability, property, a big expense, two point three million. It goes up about ten or fifteen percent every year, so that's two, two hundred thousand or so every year they increase.
Did you say ten to fifteen percent a year?
And that's low this year.
Yeah. So anyway, that, that'd give you an idea of some of those costs, purchase services that, the slide earlier at twenty-two point five million. And really, a lot of that is, is from certain areas here. CTE, running start, Delta costs, it has to be passed through. And utilities a big one, property insurance, we talked about Sedex of food service, one vendor, three point one million. We pay a city of Kennewick SRO for services at our high schools and middle schools. Usually that's twice as much, but with COVID, school wasn't in session for a couple of quarters and, and we're getting charged for that. And then down the list here, you can just kind of get an idea. Capital purchases, one point seven million, something that costs over five thousand dollars, it's supposed to be coded as capital. Career and tech ed, and yeah, they had, and if you haven't, hopefully you'll get to see some of those programs. There's, I think, three, what do you call it, virtual anatomy tables, you know, each of those is eighty thousand dollars. So that's two hundred forty thousand dollars. Those are so cool. Zachary, maybe you've experienced some of those.
I have not used one, but I have seen and heard how, how cool they are and how much they've been able to augment our sports medicine, I believe is what they use, so their sports medicine classes.
And I think another, probably fifty to a hundred thousand on some 3D printers for each high school, engravers and doing some great things with that. You know, we have a fleet of vehicles, we have to replace those, we have three high-top vans, a hundred fifty thousand. Portables over here, we cited a couple of portables, it's ECAP and some other things there that you can kind of review.
Hey, thank, sorry. I see Tri-Tech, I, I, I call it money out in these purchases. I didn't see where money in from the other schools came in for Tri-Tech, where did you capture that?
Money in?
Yeah, where they, where do they contribute to Tri-Tech?
Money in's like, like here, about five point two million, based on their enrollment.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, four hundred fifty kids, you know, times eight or nine thousand kid there.
I think that, Ron, I don't want to speak for you, but I think your question is, are the other districts kicking in and paying for that or are we just getting the money directly from the state?
So, yeah, thanks for clarifying. So all this money here, if, if there's four hundred fifty kids at Tri-Tech and fifty are from Pasco, we get the money for those fifty kids. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. And back to your question too, there is a little maintenance fee that gets charged to, to those other districts, a capital maintenance fee that goes in the capital fund that we're not quite discussing tonight.
When we expanded Tri-Tech, did all, how did the different districts contribute to that project?
That project was pretty much funded by the state.
Okay.
So they didn't have to contribute. So we'll move on, just a little touch base on twenty-one, twenty-two. And here's the enrollment chart again, and you can look at the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. So sixteen point six thousand or sixteen thousand six twenty-six away budget for basic ed. You see twenty-twenty-one actual here, sixteen, three sixty-two, well, we thought we'd get some kids back. And we're still well below these numbers here. So we're projecting sixteen thousand three ninety-five, still two hundred and thirty-one kids short, which is probably a couple million dollars, one point seven or eight million. And then, oh, you can see the legacy online, that should say Endeavor also there. So the increase there for the, the nine through twelve, that, that did go up. And then the MCP online, you see a big jump there, well over budget there, but not enough to make up the, the total difference. Again, kindergarten, thirteen hundred kids, we'd really like to get back up to fourteen hundred there. And some of the, the elementary just down a little bit, some of those kids are down here in, in the MCP program. Career and technical education, a pretty good increase there. I remember we added an ag program up there in South Ridge, so that, that increased probably twenty-three kids there. And, and some other programs, some good stuff happening there. And Tri-Tech, as Paul said, down four hundred and ten, which is really down from the, the past two or three years. Running starts also down, a lot of kids with, with the pandemic, they're short on credits and they really can't go to running start as they got to get their credits caught up.
Hey Vic, you mentioned eighty-five hundred dollars per FTE for funding per student. Is that the same regardless of whether in school or in the online program? Is the same funding?
Yeah, pretty much the same. Yeah, we get a little bit of a bump for like Tri-Tech or CTs too, but pretty much the same for the online.
Thank you.
So, so special ed, twenty-four hundred we budgeted, we hope to meet that. And some bilingual population there, we also hope to meet that. And the free and reduced rate, fifty-eight point eight percent, up a little bit from prior year. And then just the twenty-one, twenty-two general fund, so we had a, we adopted a budget deficit, well, the budget deficit of ten point four million prior to applying ESSR funds. So you can see here is ten point four, then we applied some ESSR funding and we got about down to six point four. We thought that, you know, we should be able to break even still using ESSR and managing the budget. The intention was to, to get that to break even. Projected change is not reflected in the adopted budget. So enrollment, you know, is projected to be below budget by two thirty-one, that'd be two million dollars, it would be reduced. We, we have added staff for MCP and Endeavor, one point five million. We do expect an increase in some other revenues of eight hundred fifty thousand. So, you know, not, not totally bad news there. But we plan to manage the budget, use ESSR to move closer to break even, we expect to try to get this to break even. And we should have enough money up here in the eight point two million, that was really just a placeholder. So that'll cover the one point five million for the, the added staff we have for Endeavor and online. And then we'll use that to make up some of the revenue, maintain staff, you know, as we move through this year.
The goal is to break even on the budget this year then?
That's the goal every year.
Well, yeah, we hope.
So then here's some of the ESSR funding, you know, what's going to get used this year generally, paid for the Endeavor staff. We've started some mental health services in high schools and we want to look at that, you know. You know, that really needs to be done in middle schools also, so we'll take a look at that.
Vic.
Yeah.
Before we go, I, I think Zach had a good point for, for, you know, just looking at a budget. It is, we, we don't work to make money and we don't work to say, like, get a big bank account. I just want to stress that, so that's, that's a good question he has there. If the ideal budget would be zero balance.
But then we have enough amounts where, you know, you're going to have some deficits sometime and, you know, yeah. But we don't want to, you know, run things in the ground, obviously. So tutoring services, that's been set up and, and trying to get some traction with that. PPE costs are going to continue, we've done some teacher training, some, some online type of, of things and metrics. Maintain staff position, other added staff, that's, that's a, a big chunk. We've done some nervous ability support, also some coordination support, so that's about seven point eight million. We'll be working through that, we also have costs that we still haven't claimed yet for employee absences for COVID for the prior two years where the state basically said, you know, if, if you feel like you're unsafe, you'll stay home. So, so we're in the process of going back and finding all those, those people on leave and what we pay them and get reimbursed for that. And unemployment costs related to the pandemic.
For Endeavor, that one point five million, is that an ongoing cost that's going to be each year? Or is some of that more expensive with starting up the program and it's going to be less?
Well, if you kept the program going and, and at the same enrollment, you know, see that continued, you'd have to do that every year. But right now, so what we did with MCP and online, we added the staff, but we didn't really get any enrollment. So our enrollment is still down by, you know, whatever that was right here. You know, we budgeted sixteen point six million, we're going to get sixteen point three. But we added one point five million dollars of staff for Endeavor, so we have to keep that in the back of our mind as we move forward. You know, as, as we think about, okay, we're going to, we're going to continue that program, you know, this year, next year, we have some ESSR money. But as, you know, will, will enrollment come up enough over the next two or three years where you can maintain that program? Or you have to look at, you know, some of your other high school staff and middle school staff and, you know, can you keep that program? You know, going, right now the enrollment's there, so it's, it's, it's serving a good purpose.
Vic, when you were talking about the tutoring services, do you know how many people have taken advantage of that for their students? Maybe you can get it to me later, I'm just wondering, is there more requests for it than we have funding or are we not?
No, that's definitely not the case.
We're not fully using it?
It's more building level, trying to get kids into the program, you know, get that referral system set up and things.
I'll, I'll address that, we've, we've approached this sort of in phases. So the first phase, especially when we had so many students who were identified as close contacts and having to be at a school, that our first phase was to provide tutoring services for those families. It's, it's, it is online tutoring with a real person through Varsity Tutors, so that's the first level of service we are providing. And now in the second phase, we're, we're looking to have schools, identified schools, identify students who are needing the most support for learning recovery and kind of, you know, accelerating and seeing if that tutoring strategy that they would have access to that, they call it high dosage tutoring and it's a research-based, you know, proven practice, having a one-on-one tutor. Again, it's, it's online at home, but it's sort of similar to like a, a Sylvan, you know, type tutoring, but it's just through a computer. And we're seeing if, if, A, people will access that at home if given the opportunity and if it's, if it's, if it's working. So we're kind of phasing it out and have the tutoring hours secured and able to use them as we grow the program over the course of the year.
Yep.
Can I ask one more question, Dr. Pierce, on that, how long will that go? How long will this program continue?
We have some, we've set aside some of the dollars and as Vic said, you know, we had, some of those ESSR dollars are specifically for learning recovery and acceleration. So we have set aside a portion of that seven point whatever million dollars for, for this tutoring that could happen all year. And if it's successful and working, we could, we have the potential of purchasing more hours with those ESSR funds. If we're finding that it's not the right strategy, it's just not working, then we're, you know, we'll look at other sorts of after-school supplemental programs or other ways that we can provide additional service to students who need it.
What's that tutoring thing called?
It's, it's called Varsity Tutors is the name of the, the company that we did a RFP request, or, or, yeah, RFP Request for Proposals. I'm working with federal programs and selected that company to help provide the tutoring. So it's called Varsity Tutors.
So if a kid has, so if a, if a parent reaches out to a, to a school, they would direct them, that's what they would direct them there?
So what we've done so far is provide all of the schools, here's the information that you give to parents if a student has to quarantine, whether, you know, because they're a close contact or tho, those are coming way down for us or that the student can't come to school because they're sick. So that, at the point at where the student is, has to stay home, that information's given to the parent, there's an access code about how to access. So at this point, we've mainly used it for students who've had to not be at school because of COVID. And then we've got a couple of schools identified that are helping us get it kind of started on a small scale. And I can follow up, Matt will have those school names for me, I can't recall them off the top of my head. But federal programs, we've got an after-school coordinator working in federal programs to help us with this. So it's not right now in all schools for all students, we're kind of ramping it up to make sure we do it well and do it right.
Yeah, it was really just put in place probably first of October.
Yeah.
Or maybe November, and it's just trying to gain some traction.
Yeah.
We haven't paid them anything yet either, so.
Um, I, or if your, is your question, okay. I was curious on what we're seeing with the caseload on our mental health therapists in our buildings? If one per comprehensive high school and the shared one for the non-comprehensive high schools, if we've seen that to be enough or if they're getting overwhelmed?
So I don't know exactly about the caseload, I have followed up on, you know, how's it going, referral process, you know, things in place. When I first talked to somebody, talked to Brian, who's kind of in charge of that, at the beginning of October, you know, they're getting out some kinks, but I talked to him about a week ago, he said things, you know, a couple of schools really have it set up pretty well and still working with another one, but I, it sounds like they're pretty overloaded, I'm sure, based on what Brian said. I don't know how, you know, students or what you've heard, but from what I've heard, it's, it's, it's well received. People are very appreciative of it and we'd like to look at maybe some of the school supports.
Yeah, I was, I was going to say, some of the conversations been that we almost don't want to advertise it too much and really relying on our counselors to identify the students who need it the most. And so if, if, I'm, I'm just glad to hear there's a discussion around the, the caseload that they have and.
Yes, so it's, part of that program is to, you know, educate, train counselors and, and help them, you know, kind of around how, how to deal with, with some of this going on. And then, you know, the, the severe, you know, they, they know how to refer that and stuff and then recognize, you know, cases that really need some, some of that assistance. So next, next step here with the twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three budgets, so just, you know, as I said, current enrollment of funding doesn't really support some of our costs, but we have ESSR money, so, you know, we're in good shape here for, for the next couple of years to, to continue to maintain things. And then twenty-two, twenty-three budget development, I pretty much started working in that in January through May. You know, crunching numbers and bringing stuff back to the boards and presentations. Enrollment, there's a lot of uncertainty there. You know, we review enrollment by each school and, you know, adjust staffing, you know, as necessary. Although we haven't done a lot the last year because we had the ESSR money and tried to maintain a, you know, the staffing at current levels. And then, you know, increases the property tax revenues, the, the, what's going out to the voters, you know, it's an incremental increase. So the first couple of years is really not, I think it's plus two million, maybe plus three million the first couple of years, which is not a lot. It doesn't start ramping up until after the ESSR money is gone. And then the transportation funding is a question mark, it's based on ridership. So, you know, twenty-two, twenty-three is based on these ridership numbers. So those are low and, you know, we might have to use ESSR money to plug that gap, maybe the state will provide some other money. MCP Endeavor online staffing we talked about, so we're going to use ESSR to support staffing, just continue to evaluate other strategic and impactful uses of ESSR money. And then remember, they're just one-time money, so, you know, in the budget, we're trying to kind of show that, you know, here's something with ESSR and without, so we, we don't lose track of where we're at with our financial situation.
I think Ms. Sunvik and I shared previously, but the, Senator Wellman, which is the chair of the K through twelve education community, I believe, is very well aware, well aware of the fact that our transportation funding is not working for districts across the state. And I know it is a big priority of Logan Endres and Marissa Rathbone, who are the strategic advocacy coordinators for WESDA, to get some support for districts there. to get some support for districts there. So I know there's a lot of pressure on the state this year, despite the short legislative session, to, what's the word? Review the way we fund transportation.
Thank you. All right, that's pretty much it. Let's see, have any other questions?
Thank you, Vic, always for your hard work. I appreciate it.
Thank you as well.
Thank you, Vic. Okay, next on our list is KSD Learner Profile. Dr. Pierce and Mr. Scott will be presenting.
I touched everything, so.
Okay, I'm going to get us started and then hand it over to Matt. We're going to be brief tonight because this is also on the agenda for the study session in January and the board meeting in January, as you'll see. So just want to do a quick recap on our, our new strategic plan. So in the winter of, remember my years here, 2019. Yeah. We started a process for soliciting input and feedback from the community and staff and students to help inform a new strategic plan for our district. We started off with in-person promoted, in-person listening sessions. And I was able to conduct a number of those early in 2020. And then we had to close our schools. And so when that happened, we shifted. In fact, I remember distinctively because the last in-person parent session was with our migrant and bilingual families here in Classroom C. And it was later that day that the governor shut schools down. So we then shifted to an online format and provided lots of opportunities for people to kind of complete an online process. Anyway, long story short, from all of that is the board knows different iterations. The feedback from the community came before the board, different iterations of the plan and the goals came before the board. The board ultimately adopted what is our current strategic plan. And we have three goals for our students, that all students are safe, known and valued, physically safe as well as emotionally safe. And you heard a lot of the efforts in Vic's presentation around social emotional supports and so forth, focused on safety and ensuring that all of our students feel welcome and included in school. We have a goal for all students to be engaged learners. You heard a lot about some of the programs that we have in place to ensure that struggling students are receiving the support that they need. We also have many programs and options for students to accelerate. And so we want to make sure that every single student in our, in our system from pre-K to 12th grade is engaged in getting the, the instruction that they need to be successful. And ultimately, our goal is for every student in our district to be ready for their future. You heard some good programs we have in place for that, specifically at Delta High School, at Tri-Tech. Ultimately, we want our students learning digital citizenship, social life and employment skills. We heard that strongly from our parent community. And in fact, it was kind of interesting when I was reading Micah's bio that he provided, that's, will be, you know, your board bio on the board, kind of that, that whole idea of preparing students for their future. And I know that's a big priority for all of our board members. We also want to ensure that our students have the opportunity to become bilingual and bilingual, and our bilingual programs provide that and have been expanded. And ultimately, we want every student graduating with a personalized plan. We saw some of the Delta work around that where students, we try to cultivate, like, what are your interests and what do you want to do in the future? And then ensure that there's opportunities and programs that meet those aspirations and that we're helping all those students be successful. What we're focusing on tonight is this aspect of that goal, learning digital citizenship, social life and employment skills. So that was feedback that we heard from our community as we were developing the strategic plan. But we don't really right now have a document of any kind that gets specific about what does that mean? What are digital citizenship skills? What are those life and employment skills that regardless of where, what high school you go to, what middle school, what elementary school? How are we sort of cultivating those skills and expecting those skills and fostering those all throughout the system? So it was January of last year at a board presentation where we came and talked about the development of a learner profile for our district that would be that specific document that specifies those, what do we mean by that? Part of our strategic plan. And so tonight, we're going to just provide a little bit of recap reminder because we have new board members and it's been a while since we've talked about this topic. And then Matt's going to provide an update on the design process because he's really been working with a team and doing some community engagement processes around the development of our specific document. So the next few slides you're going to see are actually from the January 13th, 2021 Board Study Session, so almost a year ago. And at that point, we presented kind of some background information and rationale for what's the purpose of this and why are we doing this? So while we have a mission and vision statement focused on graduation and preparing students to meet and reach their highest potential, the learner profile is more of a specific document that gets to, again, those interpersonal skills, the cognitive, you know, kind of thinking skills and things that we're trying to cultivate in our students. The document is one that should be co-created with input from key stakeholders, including families and higher education in terms of where are we sending kids after they graduate and, and our, our staff and so forth, and students as well. And we've had some, just a real quick aside, a couple of different opportunities throughout the last couple of years to get some feedback from students through the Superintendent Student Advisory Council that includes high school students. And so many school districts across the country have actually developed these kind of documents because it really can be used as a, a guide to help identify and prioritize. It can help us go, huh, this is what we're trying to provide for our students? Are there enough opportunities in our system to actually make this a reality? So it's sort of a framework-type document. At, in some districts, they might call it a portrait of a graduate or a portrait of a learner. And interestingly, at the state level, State Board of Education, after we started this work locally in our school district, they started a state-level effort to develop a statewide portrait of a graduate. So we're also kind of keeping our eyes on that as that state board work develops as well. So again, we kind of have the beginnings of this kind of profile just at the high level because we heard from families and heard from staff that digital citizenship, being safe online, learning how to navigate in our world that's full of technology, that that's important, that having social skills, learning how to get along with other people, understanding civil discourse, all of those things, that's a, a social skill that's important. Life skills, you heard a lot about employment and life skills, being on time, doing your work, held accountable for, you know, what's expected of you, those types of things. But we don't want to get specific on what does all of this mean until we do some additional stakeholder input and engagement to be specific about. What do we believe this looks like in our community? And what do we want to focus on? So with that, we started this work and it's been, you know, a slow, I don't, I don't mean slow. I mean, it's been a, it's a deliberative and intentional process. And so it's still happening. Matt tonight is going to give a process, an update on the process and the committee that he's been working with and kind of let the board know where we are in the development process. And then you're going to, we're going to come with more specific information that reflects the stakeholder group input when we get to the meetings in January. Take it away, Matt.
And it has been a slow process. It's been challenging. To be honest, this, this whole process really started back in August of 2019, just as, as Dr. Pierce was joining the district. Because we, that was the time that we were also starting our one-to-one initiative with our Tech Levy and the Chromebooks. And we had Chromebooks out in some of our classes. We were kind of doing a slow rollout. And we had a district visioning day where we really understood that we needed to work with, with teachers, with families, with students to understand how to use these tools. And that's where the idea of this learner profile started to take shape. But we figured we better start with the strategic plan first and then come back to it. And we had all those interruptions that Dr. Pierce mentioned. But, so it has been a process, it's been a very deliberative process. And so I wanted to just update you tonight. When we came to you in January, we did talk about kind of a phased approach to the development. Again, we wanted it to be done deliberately. We wanted it to be done with stakeholder input. We wanted it to be something that encapsulated the values of the community. And so we really talked about different phases. The first phase being the planning phase. And during that time, that was really, again, our, our initial discussions with the board, our initial discussions as a leadership team around what would we do with this process? How would we develop it? We also spent some time creating who the design team would be and defining kind of the timelines that we would approach it with. During our Phase Two, we knew that we would be then working with the design team, really studying some examples, doing some research, figuring out what we wanted to look, what we wanted our competency frameworks to look like. And then we wanted to enter into Phase Three. Our goal was to get, you know, kind of get to Phase Three at the beginning of the school year. And so we actually, based on the phases, are kind of a little bit ahead of where we thought we would be, even though it has been kind of a slow process. So in January to February, that was when we kind of introduced the, introduced it to the board and really kind of developed our plan and, and decided that we really needed to have a facilitated process because, again, we needed somebody who had kind of guided districts through this before. And we had the opportunity, but through a partnership with Dell Computers, we had some, some grant dollars available for, you know, probably about two weeks or so, about 14 or 16 days of consultative work. And so we entered a partnership with them. During March, between March and June, that was when the design team got together. We got, got the folks together to start working on it. We developed what our outcomes would be. We engaged in that research. We worked with the facilitator to begin creating that draft learner profile. And we actually got a draft completed by June to the point where we felt like we could kind of give it a rest for, for people's vacation time, come back to it in August and go to the next step, which is really completing the creation of it, but then beginning to start discussing with the broader community the draft and collecting their feedback to make revisions. The design team that we identified back in, in February are these folks in front of you. We went with folks, the goal was to get a wide, a wide perspective. So we wanted to have folks who were involved both administratively with the strategic plan, who were also involved in the staff development, professional development area with our, with our district. Because, again, this is really about educating teachers as well. We wanted our, we wanted to access federal program dollars and we wanted to be focused on the goals there. We also wanted to make sure that a wide variety of voices were heard. So we wanted folks who work within all of our special programs, whether it be special education or our bilingual folks or our highly capable folks to be at the table. Initially, our teacher voices were filled by our coordinators, who are, who are certificate teachers and who are operating under the, you know, they are, they're, they're not administrators, they are teachers. So Liz Dale, Tina Brewer, Brent Sharp are those folks who were bringing that teacher voice to the work that we were doing. We wanted a strong CTE connection, so we have our Director of CTE. And then we wanted principals from each level. And then Dr. Laurie McEwen was our facilitator. And this was the group that met several times over the course of the spring to work on the development of learner profile. We spent a lot of time looking at some examples. And so these are just, to give you a context for what we're talking about, the type of work that other districts have done. We don't want to replicate the work of other districts, but we certainly wanted to get some examples to see if there were some things that resonated with us. And so it's a little bit challenging to see because it is small, but basically, there were, there were a lot of commonalities in these in terms of thinking of broad attributes and then defining those, either through, you know, giving examples or in the development of ICANN statements that students could then, you know, apply to their own learning. So this is one example. And this is another example from Shelby County Public Schools in, in Tennessee. They, again, broad themes that are identified and then, you know, just kind of exploring those skills and breaking them down and, and seeing how they would apply. So this is what we're really talking about, that we are working on developing. Our next steps, right now, we have gone out to a number of individuals. So we have brought this, the, the draft of the learner profile to our student advisory group. We brought it to all of our curriculum advisory groups. We brought it to our, the parent advisory councils that we have, well, for special education and our migrant bilingual parent advisory councils. I presented to WSU their, their factory or faculty heads, as well as CBC. We developed, we provided a presentation to Mid-Columbia Library Board. We did, so we were reaching out to as many folks. Our CTE advisory is also another one where we're trying to get some input from a wide variety of folks, business leaders, higher education, parents, students, on our initial attempt at putting together a learner profile. We're going to continue doing that and we're already going to start making some revisions based on the feedback we've received so that on January 12th, we can come and you can provide your feedback on what we have done and what we've created to then continue that work over the, in the next couple of weeks to further revise based on feedback from the board and to also finalize with our communications department, the visual design. And so the plan is on January 26th to present that final version to the board at their business, your business meeting on that date for approval. Once we have approval on that, the next step of the, of the implementation process starts. It will be continuing our work with Dr. McEwen on developing a communication and implementation plan. How are we going to use the learner profile? How are we going to communicate it out to our wider populations? How are we going to use, utilize it to guide our efforts during, starting then the 2022, 2023 school year? So that is kind of the snapshot of the work that's being done and kind of to set the context for what we'll share on January 12th, which will be kind of unveiling the work that's been done by that community, by that committee, along with the community. Are there any questions or comments that I could entertain?
I'll just comment on the student involvement. So we spent an entire Superintendent Student Advisory Council working with Dr. Pierce and Mr. Scott here on developing, from the student perspective, the learner profile. And they took a lot of our feedback. It was a very collaborative process. And so students have definitely been involved in this process. So I appreciate that and you prioritizing us, so thank you.
Questions for Mr. Scott?
Thanks for the work.
Thank you. Talk to you, talk to you more on the.
All right. So I believe that will finish up our reports and discussions. We're now on to new business. We're going to talk about the Thunderbird mascot renaming. Jack Anderson and Paul Osborne will be presenting.
Thank you. Excuse me, I've got a little bit of laryngitis, but we'll try to get through this. As Dr. Pierce talked about our strategic goals, one of the things that we try to keep in the forefront is our goals. And part of today's goal is reaching out to the public. And I'll talk a little bit about that. It is a community goal. And it is, we value our community for their feedback. We value our community for the collaboration that we have. And today, we're going to talk a little bit about legacies mascot and just a little bit of background information. This last year, the House Bill 1356 was passed into law, which limits the use of Native American names and mascots and symbols, logos, team names. And we, like Tracy had mentioned earlier, went up and with consultation with the Yakima tribe, presented to them not only the Kamik and Brave logo and mascot, but also the legacy Thunderbirds. The Thunderbirds is a coastal tribe. As a result of that, the Yakimas didn't feel like it was their place to grant us permission to continue using it. And without permission, we could not continue to use it. So we proceeded then with the renaming of the mascot. And I'm going to turn this over now to Mr. Osborne. He is going to talk a little bit about the process that they went through, the outreach that they did, not only with their own. that they did, not only with their own community at Legacy, but also the entire community as a whole. So, Paul.
All right, good evening. Hi, I am Paul Osborne. I'm the principal of Legacy High School, Endeavor High School, and some other programs in the district. Let me start by welcoming our new board members. I appreciate your service. As well as Mr. Glenn, I do appreciate you being here as well, too.
Thank you.
So we do have a policy in place for our procedure. Policy 9250, the naming of school district facilities and school mascots. Excerpts from that, mascots for new district buildings shall reflect a positive school image and expression of school unity and pride. And although the board will carefully consider community recommendations for school facility and mascot names, the final responsibility for officially naming a school building, a facility within a school building, and school mascots rests with you, the school board. Part of the procedure, portion of the policy, mascots shall reflect a positive school image with an emphasis on expression of school unity and pride. If the school board decides to rename a mascot, or if a change is required by law, which is our situation tonight, the community will be solicited to suggest names for the mascot. The superintendent or designee shall select a committee whose purpose shall be to submit to the school board a list of not less than three or more than five new names for the mascot. The list shall identify each mascot and briefly state why the committee nominated each school mascot. The committee shall solicit nominations from students and the community. So our committee, that met a number of times to decide our nominations to you, including myself, my assistant principal Travis Hackey, our two counselors, four teachers, a special ed, case manager, and then four students that I appreciate so, so much. They, they spent their time after school, meeting with us, and gave wonderful input. So I really appreciate those students. So started the process a few weeks ago, we sent out a survey to the community. It was widespread with two simple questions. My new mascot idea for Legacy High School is, and the name should be considered by Mascot Recommendation Committee because? We got 135 results on that survey and one submission outside of the survey as well, So the committee took those 136 submissions and through a process, which is, 136 doesn't sound like a lot, but getting it down, narrowed down is quite the, quite the challenge. Everybody has inputs, everybody has differing opinions and whatnot. We got it narrowed down to these three choices, the Ravens, the Thunder, and the Rattlesnakes. Don't look at those percentages yet, I will explain what those percentages mean. I just didn't have another place, place to put those. So again, we started with 136, got it narrowed down to these three. And I want to share how that process went a little bit. The students had a lot of input at the very beginning, and then it kept moving in a certain direction for one of these choices, and kept moving, and kept moving, and kept moving. We were about ready to wrap up, and we had a recognition that the students had quieted down for a while. And I was like, okay. So I reached, I reached out to our, our four students, I was like, do you like where we're, where we're going with this? And instantly, all four of them shook, shook their heads. I was like, okay, that's, that's very telling, and I appreciate that. They didn't want to offend any of the adults in the room, they, you know, and things like that. So conversation continued on afterwards, and we got it narrowed down to these three. And then we were like, okay, do we want to take this to the board or what's the next step? And they wanted to take it to the students. They wanted the students to, to see these three choices. So we did. And those are the percentages that you see up, up there, is the second survey to our students of, of the student body. Two-thirds, 66% of the students wanted the Ravens as their mascot. So some comments from the committee regarding Ravens. Ravens are present in Washington State and is unique to the Kennewick School District, symbolizing optimism and new beginnings. The Raven is a bird that connects us with the tradition of the Thunderbird and represents the uniqueness of the Legacy community. A Raven symbolizes intelligence, survival, adaptability, guidance, transformation, and opportunity, and an opportunity, all of which are characteristics which represent Legacy students. I want to stress, those three bullet points came from the committee as to why they wanted it. The Google form, the survey that we sent out to the student body, had the, the opportunity to say why they chose the top one of the top three. And just one stood out amongst the rest, and we wanted to make sure we shared that one with you as well, too. The spiritual meeting is significant. Looking it up, it says the Ravens sign symbolizes wisdom, affection, healing powers, longevity. Its jet-black color represents the night, the great void, and even the earth. And the student even cited that they got it from the World of Birds website, which I fully appreciate. So. So that being said, after careful consideration and thoughtful deliberation, naming committee recommends that the mascot of Legacy High School be changed from the Thunderbirds to the Ravens. And I'm opening it up for questions on the process, or I know we have new members, if you have any questions about Legacy High, I'd be glad, glad to answer that, too. And then ask that we move second and vote on the mascot.
We'd like to change seats.
I'm just asking for that. You can do whatever you like.
Well, I wanted to point out how much I appreciate seeing not one or two, but four students on the committee. I like seeing that. And I appreciated you taking, or someone taking enough notice to see that the students were not fully comfortable in the environment and you finding a way to address that and make some changes. So I just want to say, I really appreciate that. And I also love that the students had so much input in, in selecting their mascot, but it wasn't just picking your favorite bird or whatnot. There was a lot of logic and thought and deliberation behind picking the Ravens. So I just want to say thank you.
Any questions, comments?
Just in, in kind of answering your question, Legacy High School had a presentation a couple of board meetings ago, or meeting ago or something, and I listened to it, so you got, it sounds great.
All right, we have no more questions. I will entertain a motion to rename the mascot of Legacy High School.
I make a motion that after, due to the careful consideration and thoughtful deliberation, I, I make a motion to recommend that the mascot of Legacy High School be changed to the Raven, Ravens.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions, comments? Not, I will call, we will call vote.
Mr. Galbraith?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Ms. Sunvek?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
Mr. Connors?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, that concludes new business, and we have no other business as authorized by law. So I would join the meeting. Thank you very much. There you go. There you go.
Jump right into it.
Well, may as well, the water's warm.
Do you log out?
You do.[1789.26]